Although. Launch a meeting to order. Uh, please rise for your personal allegiance. And uh remain standing afterwards to have a moment of silence for Phil Ward. Uh who passed away this last week. He was with the fire department for twenty plus years. And he is the father of our club treasure, Chris. So. Thank you. Corolla?
Here.
Tatters?
Here.
Or?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Fratton?
Here.
Okay, um, on the approval of the agenda, I have three items, very short ones. Uh to add. So I guess number D will be. Voting on uh closing city hall on Friday. From one thirty to three thirty, so staff members can attend. The funeral. The second one will be um. The obsessors pay increase. Uh because he's over his six months probation. And uh. The third one will be appointment to the Marina Board. Okay? So we need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Okay?
I'll say it.
Brokaw?
Uh, Tatters?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Fratton?
Yeah.
Crowe?
Yes.
Um, okay, request to appear before council, we have none. At this point, we will accept public input. In three minutes. We're expecting this super sending a gentleman.
Um, as you know, uh I've had conversations with you about the cell tower that's going up in Bellows Park. Um, today we ended up uh obtaining the nineteen thirty eight deed to that property. And in that deed. It says the property herein conveyed to said city of Frankfurt. Is conveyed um to said city for the purpose. Of public use and shall be known as. L W Bellows Park. That is for public use, not for private enterprise. There's gonna be restrictions on the use of that park with this cell tower. We've obtained legal counsel who states that this is in violation of the deed restrictions. So we are gonna continue to move forward and ask that this project be told of.
Okay, thank you.
I said. And per conversation yesterday with Josh and yourself. Um, and Chris Lake Township members. I've contacted a few neighbors that are also. Connected to that property. Um, right down there. Tied in with Thomas Road and Bellows. And they are both. Not compliant with this. Their two brothers. Dennis and um. Mark. So, you know, they sent me a little blurb to read, but you know, there's no sense reading it. And just suggesting that, you know, put in the notes that they're not complying with this. They're upset that there is no notification about this. Out and they would like to see this season halted as well.
Thank you. Any other public input? Okay. There really isn't any correspondence other than what Jamie just handed you that was done. The Sicker Family Fund has. Uh presented a grant amount of five thousand dollars to the rental. For its restoration, so. We will put that team into the point of file. Okay. That was the other correspondence approval of regular council meeting. December. Yeah. And I saw, you know, correcting the typos or anything like that. I'll make a motion to approve the N S S presented. Brokaw?
Tatters?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Olson?
Here.
Stratton?
Crowe?
Yes.
I'm here to build up the bills.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve prepaid vouchers five seven one oh two through five seven one five one. H R A number eight 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 five through eight nine oh five. The amount of four hundred sixteen thousand one hundred sixty seven dollars seventy three cents of which. Sixty nine thousand two hundred sixty dollars seventy three cents for taxes due to county jail. A roll voucher number four one nine oh seven three four two zero four nine E F P. Seven three zero through seven four six, the amount of one hundred eighty seven thousand four hundred forty nine dollars. Twenty three cents of which. One hundred twenty nine thousand six hundred thirty seven cents, thirty seven dollars seventy two cents for wages. One thousand two hundred four seven dollars twenty three cents for employee retire benefits. Four thousand five hundred fifty three twelve cents for employee deductions. Twenty eight thousand six hundred and three and twenty three cents for federal tax deposits and twenty three thousand. Four hundred seven dollars ninety three cents for mirrors.
So, any questions? On the bill? Okay, now Brokaw? Or?
Yes.
Olson?
Here.
Stratton?
Yes.
Corolla?
Yes.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, the second motion, uh I'll take a motion to approve vouchers five seven one five two through five seven two one six. In the amount of a hundred and seventy one thousand three hundred and forty four dollars and fifty nine cents. I'm sorry. Olson?
Here.
Fratton?
Yep.
Crowe?
Yes.
Tatters?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Okay, committee, account for numbers reported, uh yeah?
V D A? Uh, on January seventh, um. Talks about the past events, uh like the holiday shopping, the day four hundred people, forty people signed up for. Um, that is, uh which was a good turnout quarter improvements, I'll Josh will speak on that. Um, no update on business accelerator task force. Um. We talked about back to the bricks car show, uh that'd be um. Over the summer, two hundred fifty cars from one five P M west of Third Street. Um, Third Street not being closed, so basically, uh and we're from basically Third Street over to the uh lake. Um, should be a really good turnout, uh hopefully, uh uh first thing doing is should be should be great. Uh, we approved a agreement with the Chamber of Commerce uh for Brennan Nugent. For the um that position uh for V D A sharing a position with the the Chamber of Commerce. Um, and then the lighthouse fundraising proposal. Uh for a concert at Lockhart Field, Lockhart Field is still preliminary. Uh, but something that they're really trying to get behind. Uh, to really help uh generate funds for the White House, which Aaron Bibby has been doing a great job with it. Um, so we'll see, it's, uh she has some really great ideas. Let's see if it can functionally work in the city or especially at Lockhart Field. It's always a unique venue, so. Um, but we're gonna keep updating on that. That's all I have.
Okay. And I'll take care of five. Um, the housing. And third advisory. Because she did do, I forgot, to write my rhetorical. On finer advisory. But anyway, uh moving on to Dale.
Personnel, we really didn't have too much this past month. Uh, last month, uh he introduced my cuts as the new chief. And uh, but he had only just, uh I was young, I believe, his second day, so. He's uh gotten indoctrinated over the last month and um and that, so um. But that's really about all on the personnel. The finance meeting, I was absent for. The water and sewer. Did not meet. The planning commission had a workshop in lieu of a regular meeting on uh January fourteenth. It was uh well attended, so the purpose of the workshop was to. Uh, look at potential ways to try to streamline some of the meetings, uh. And so uh different things were talking about with that. And then to prioritize some of the major issues that they wanna try and tackle next year. And uh some of the things, um so they made a listing of those. Um, and that, some of the same type of things that we've been seeing, uh short term rentals. Um, fence, um. Uh, uh fence ordinance, uh trying to finalize uh. The rooftop unit use as well as several other items there, so uh it was a good workshop. And um, and that, and I thought it was a good clever pepper on everybody's part. It's the uh blue that. Last Thursday, nothing too much to report there. We did receive the year end audit. Um, I have not fully reviewed it, uh there was not anything of significance with that. No, but I haven't done a final uh full review of that audit, um. And that, probably the biggest uh item with that is. That um we are finally, hopefully, gonna be issuing the bonds that we've been seeking. Uh, those will be going out for a bid at quotes on uh January twenty third. And they're due back on February thirteenth, so hopefully we'll get some favorable rates. Josh and I have a uh. A phone call on Thursday for the final uh review of the information on that, so.
Any idea at all of the? Same of interest rate?
Uh, not right now, we'll probably talk a little bit more.
Get on Thursday.
Yeah. The Marina Authority did not uh meet, uh we are trying to get something scheduled and um and that. Um, so just a lot of conflicts with uh schedules and people out of town and so on and so forth. But that's, that is getting to be a priority because we're gonna have to uh set next season's rates. As well as um look at the uh the personnel contract, so, so that is something that we need to. Get finalized um in that, so that's what I have on the my committee.
Okay, thank you. Hey, myself, um. I did uh attend the uh. Finance committee, that was the Thursday after our uh last council meeting. Um. We look pretty good at this point, being halfway through our fiscal year. Uh, very few adjustments needed, again, like I s- I uh mentioned last month how. Amazing all of the tax taxes are coming in. We do have some chargebacks that we're going to have to. Uh, it's cleanup from uh the assessments. Um. And we are still waiting for a date to be able to present our audit. I did, after the meeting was over, I sat down with our new. Police chief, uh and we went over his budget and talked extensively about that. So he knows, you know. What's where and so on and so forth. Um, so. Um, to. The tree board, um. We met on January fifteen. Top fifteen, the plans for spring planting are coming together with a target of roughly forty new trees. The board is for focusing on energizing the trees that have been planted over the last three to four years. And the plan is to focus on getting them all some compost and fertilizer in the spring. In February, the plan is to do some pruning of the trees. Uh, the new posters for twenty twenty five should be coming in within the next one to two months. Uh, they went to the Holly Berry and sold four hundred and forty five dollars in posters. So that's gonna help. And our Arbor Day plan is, if we can work it out with the school. Is to plant one or two trees at the elementary school beside the new sign. But there's maybe an issue, but we always have mistakes come in and uh find out where the underground wires are, so. Um, that's what's going on there. I did go to the housing meeting. I filled in for Ed, uh who wasn't able to come. On the Lake and Main Apartments update, Josh, correct me on any of these, cause I kind of get confused sometimes. And I did write this right afterwards, so feel free to correct me on any missed statements. Phone call uh from John Stevenson, who is the. Uh. Contractor for uh. Lake and Main, uh he reported that five of the six. Uh, units on Main Street are occupied with the sixth about to be accrued. Then. Uh, Main Street apartments, the second building facing twenty two is waiting for active securitization. At this time, there are few of the hundred and twenty percent of the A M I. Uh. Rental for the hundred and twenty percent of an A M I is for one person is seventy five thousand. Nine hundred and sixty dollars, two person is eighty six thousand, three person is ninety seven. Thousand, this is. Uh, the project is uh within budget and there were no over- ovaries. Uh, the Lake and Main Phase Two, still working on that, this particular site. The city needs to clear, clarify an issue with the owner of. Of um that property. Uh, there is, was it the sewer bank up or just? A sewer.
Watering break.
Watering break that act up into where Grace has moved into, yeah. So, um. The expanded uh corridor housing district, Josh stated that the city attorney is considering. Having a workshop on the application process. It was also stated that one individual has completed an application. Say correct?
Yes.
Okay, uh the update on the broke place homes uh recorded by J Y. There is a contact on the fourth home, we're about ready to close and move in on that. There is a parcel in Frankfurt of which it has. Uh, the possibility of four to six workforce housings and more information will come later. Once that property is obtained. Um, under new business, they're exploring addition additional housing opportunities. In Frankfurt and uh Alberta. Uh, there was a discussion on a new cent bill number two ninety three. Which. I took from it was it addresses my neighborhood. Uh, things and assessments on mortgage values, home and rental. And I spoke up and said my concern was how this is, how this will affect the city of Frankfurt revenues. And it was stated that we have uh. Uh, a couple pending. Uh, huge projects in the future. Uh, something we need to keep an eye on, you know, we don't wanna be given out more than what it's gonna give him. So. Another pending bill is employer assistant housing. It was stated that this has some strings attached, oh. That won't really be beneficial to the employer. The next scheduled meeting will be February. At ten thirty. In that grant committee, we did not meet. Uh. That's it. Oh, I did attend, uh, actually. I did attend the fire advisory board meeting and that went very well, we presented them with a. A potential of where we're at right now, budget rise. And we got asked a lot of questions, which we were able to answer. And then last Thursday, Mike and I worked on the future budget. Which looks like there's gonna be a reduction for each entity. And their share for the coming year, which last year there was a. A lot of concern that they were at the maximum military, so. But uh we went through it line by line and. We uh even put in some things that weren't there before, like Mike's. Stated that they're mandated to get physicals and that's never been put in the budget. So we put a dollar amount in there for the fire and. First responders to go through that and what was it? Oh. And we made sure that uh we have money allotted for replacing some turnout here. And stuff like that, which hasn't been put in before, so it's a good budget, I think. Yeah, so. That's, that's it for me, you know, and I, I do attend uh the planning and hot committee. And basically what we uh do is refer to um. The planning commission, things that we feel need to be looked at and get moving forward like signs. The fences and so on and so forth, so Josh has got a list of those that will look more in depth. To, so that's it for me. Great.
Okay, uh, let's see, rec board has been on a winter hiatus. Uh, we'll resume those meetings either next month in March. Uh, airport, we did not meet the month of December, that's standard for the airport, not to meet December. Uh, we actually meet Thursday of this week, so I'm gonna turn on the airport for next month. Uh, public safety, we met uh last Friday, um. I have my notes here on what all we talked about, uh um. Kind of getting Mark settled into his role a little bit, uh parent chief. Tell me he's working on some grants for a few different things. Uh, we did talk about. Lockhart Field, the parking issue. That takes place during softball and football games, that's kind of an impediment to. Our first responders getting out of the fire department and that's something we are gonna work to address with, you know. Uh, somebody at the school, probably Matt Stapleton and Benji Andrew, who runs, kind of runs the field. See if we can't come up with a little better plan, so that there's not cars staggered on James Street and Day Avenue. You know, kind of blocking the, the guys from getting up to go on a call. So I'll be working on that, um. Other than that, not a whole lot else to talk about. I think we'll probably, for the time being, continue public safety meetings per month. Just kind of keep Mark and bring him up to speed on more stuff as needed. So. Beyond that, that's all I got.
Okay. Nothing? Okay, and. You all, oh, she's here. Uh, commissioners report, Christine.
Hello, everybody. Sorry, wait, I, I emailed.
That you were gonna be a human society.
Yes, I have a conflict before this meeting. I've asked that that. Meeting get moved and it has been moved to three thirty, so I should be more timely when we hear about it. Okay. Um, yeah, so um new happenings at the board commissioners, uh. Of course, I am the commissioner, I was sworn in in December. Our first organizational meeting, I think you've all read in the paper that Art Janot is our chair and Ron Denai is our vice chair. Um, when things, uh, we also changed our study sessions to be a half an hour after. The uh. Regular meeting. Or twelve thirty, whichever is later. And there are some changes to March, April, November schedule, but otherwise everything else is good. Um, committee appointments were postponed until fourteenth. Um, we also set a chair term limit to uh one year. Or excuse me, we set per chair term to one year. And we instituted some term limits, so the chair can only serve in two consecutive terms.
So then. That, that is art, you know. So he can only be in for one year. But he could be in for two years, that, that's how.
Yeah, so his term is one year. And he could be in for a second year. We have term limits, so that he can't serve more than two consecutive.
Okay.
Years.
That's very new.
That is very new.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. That is correct. Uh, so then our regular meeting, um. We reviewed our accomplishments for last year, um it's a very big laundry list. And I know our chair is looking to um. Uh, have a lot. Um. Is looking for us to continue on that trend and to do a lot, and he has asked. Some of the commissioners to think of a tech project that they would like to contribute for the year. And so we discussed that at our, our study session. Um, a big thing, though, that I think um affects the county is that we are doing um a production and committee appointments. Um. So, um, they looked at just committees that uh commissioners are required to be on. And boards that the commissioners are required to be on, and those are the ones that have been assigned up commissioners. Um. Three entities in this, in my district, District Three, have been removed from the roster. Um, but I'm, I would still like to be uh pretty to those committees, um what has been removed. Is the Airport Authority, the Maples, and um the Betsy Whitehouse. And so I've been assigned to other committees, I've been assigned to the E D C. The Health Department and Materials Management. Um, and of course, uh, an M A C, uh, Michigan. Association of Counties. And uh committee as well. Um, just something to note that um Desi County is going to do an electronics waste collection, June twenty first and August twenty third from nine to one. Um, at our study session, a strategic plan was re- our strategic plan was reviewed. Um, it was also proposed to reinvest our marijuana tax revenues in some community driven projects. So the commission will be looking at that, the board. Um, we also reviewed some R O P for opioid funds. And we had um a matrix that we uh scored them and the results will be next study session. And our budget and grants will be updated, and so when I have that, I will share that out as well. Yes, any suggestions for me?
Well, welcome aboard.
If you say anything, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on. The department heads report, you will see. Person uh report there and thank you, Amy. person, uh, report there and thank you, Amy, for showing me.
Let's start off just by saying that our EPW, who does, you know, stuff for the job, keeping our street safety, for our residency measures. Um, they do, like just a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
Making sure that the rubbery, uh, the system that we have with, with Main Street and in collaboration we have with Eric Anderson and some of the other businesses. It just, it goes so smoothly. We need to look at a downtown area that doesn't have a lot of smoke banks at the curb areas. It just, it just provides a lot, a lot more safe walkability for our community. So if you see the, the crew around, please stand up, I think, if you're a good job, like.
You see you.
Our engineer, Jeff Cockburn, I are continually working on the Michigan Avenue project. Um, we're going to work with Bob Kirby to, to do some further investigation with his back truck around Winnebago Streets. Just a few questions that we've had before finalizing that project. Um, that'll go to Eagle for their review and then, uh, you'd be there as well. Um, let's recap, that project involved updating the sewer main uh, from Main Street all the way up to Hepper Hill, doing a complete watering, sewer main replacement over Winnebago. Street repair will be a component of that. We'll also update storm sewer sections, the water needs a good chase. That was actually installed in the late eighties. The northern portion of Michigan Avenue from Park Avenue will involve a new watering. So we're getting close to getting that finalized from goal, but our goal is to do that project in twenty twenty five. Uh, we're also working on updating the general plan reliability study. This is a requirement with Eagle. And part of that is doing a, a water model, which will help fire chief with his efforts and, and moving forward with, uh, looking at how we can enhance our ISO ratings through our, our, you know, our flow testing. And, uh, we recently had a beach street well inspected by Northern Pump. We haven't had the data back yet, but their, their prominent feedback was that it's really good condition. Um, that helps us to, to allow us to work with Eagle because that's some, you know, it's an older well, but it sat dormant for about thirty years and we had it cleaned and re-energized and some work on the new end. So it's our position that it's, it's, it's got a long useful life. So as long as we continue to do these inspections, provide that data for Eagle, though, they'll be fine with a, you know, with the age of it associated with. Good producing well. Uh, yes, it's good to offer as well. Um, we do need to, uh, it's good that we're going to have, uh, appointment to the Marina, Marina's struggling to get a formal. Uh, we do need to have, we need to go over our contracts with our Marina managers, our launch ramp. Also rates, um, Jen was able to send a letter to our seasonal slip holders, just tell them that we're in the process of reviewing our rates. You know, sometimes we don't raise those rates. I think we go in spurs, you know, so it depends on, on through any input from Marina, but also City Council head by a say. We did get the freezer door replaced on the launch ramp, um, that'll, that'll help when we get moving in season. Um, that door has deteriorated to the point where it was, uh, inefficient with a freezer. We don't want to replace that freezer. We want to continue and, and extend the useful life of that freezer as long as we can. Um, did have a really good conversation with, with Marvin, our fish and trail individual, Elphie. And, uh, I told him that we would like to have a contract with him, so he's going to be preparing that. But, uh, he's, some of the loose ends he dealt with last summer, uh, are being secured, so looks, looks favorable for for no issues.
Okay.
Uh, we did talk about maybe having some additional, you know, containers there. You know, for situations, you know, especially if we have outstanding fishing like we did last year.
Is, is there only so much room though in that freezer?
Yeah. So I mean, he's got to stay on top of it.
Yeah.
But last year, if we recall, we had to bring in additional drop thirty.
Right.
We got rid of five point three tons of additional fishing trails. Um, still waiting on the pump out grant for the Marina. I'm optimistic about that. As you recall, back in, was it two thousand one, we got a grant to buy the, the unit that we have now. So hopefully they'll, um, provide funding for us to move forward with that purchase. Um, also with the Marina, you know, this will be something we'll talk about with the Marina Authority, but, but getting some plan work and admitting out the, the lead to storage building that will go on the backside of Marina.
Grant, Fisher, setting. Okay.
Yeah.
In the arena, so in.
But they actually were in decent shape.
And you're going to be starting to collect s- uh, seasonal slips.
Yeah.
Pretty soon too, so.
Actually, there should be another ninety thousand dollars to the revenue.
Yeah, so you're in good shape to be getting some bits right now.
Yes, and, and also, uh, you need to have some conversation whether or not we want to proceed with a grant application with a water waste commission. Um, there's all two things that we did secure funding for. We also should update a hydrographic survey of that of the water well coming down. Be mindful of what type of water we're having, kind of reflect back to when we had it dredged out last two thousand thirteen, so kind of showing what we're dealing with as well. Because we obviously been strolling from the river mouth. Well, now it comes down. Um, so Marina typically favors decently with that kind of show, but the, the channel going key shore into the boneyard um, does fill up a little bit more because of the, the river action. Any questions for me?
I, I just have a quick question. Um, I saw the invoice from, uh, I'm thinking of the names, the people that are doing the, uh, the, uh, the research on, uh, short term rentals and.
Yes.
Have we, we got any initial feedback?
Um, Shannon and I are bringing that, that them twice now while setting up our debt.
Okay.
So that should be up and running. Um, we'll resume, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, looking forward to that. And we did talk in the, uh, planning and hot committee that we need to increase the fees, so we'll need to go into, um, anybody that's violating. You know, um.
Now, there's, there's a little bit of uncertainty whether the fighting commission's going to take the lead on that or the city council. We have amendments, police follow orders.
Right.
Um, but I think everyone's in agreement about the enforcement side with the, with the penalties.
Look into that in our next planning and, uh, sort that out. Um.
That's a relatively easy amendment.
Yeah, and it's, it's really over like fifty dollars if they get caught doing it and they're not licensed, you know, to do it, but we think it needs to be stickered and matched. So, anyway. So that's all I have to add to Josh. Any other questions? Yep, okay, uh, Mark. Your turn.
Okay, okay. So, so trying to get settled. It's been a month. Uh, it's been, uh, cleaning, cleaning some things out. Taking care of some messes, uh, figurative and, and actual messes. But, uh, I'm getting settled and some things are popping up. Um, administratively wise with MCOS, Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards, and we're going to get through those as well as, uh, repairs to one of the patrol vehicles that have got that square made of insurance companies agree to pay that. Entire bill, no, nobody done it since the last year yet. So that'll be taken care of. Uh, hopefully that car can last us a couple more years.
Okay.
And, uh, attended a half dozen meetings and had a lot of my own with my staff to, to address any needs they may have, storage equipment or uniforms. And one of those meetings was in reference to the unfunded mandate upcoming with, uh, police radios. And reprogramming those and us having to replace all of the portable radios as well as three mobile radios for the cars. Um, to get ahead of that, uh, so there's, so we're not stuck in a line waiting to get radios once every other agency in the state finds funding, uh, since I think we worked that, the funding issue out. Probably with uh, next month's meeting, I'll be, um, addressing that. So we can get that square ready for those purchases, so we don't get separated in line behind parameter, it's BD or something like that, or state release or any of these other larger agencies. Who, who does that mandate take effect? Uh, I believe the, the actual, the end date, like you have, they haven't done, is October of twenty twenty six. Initially, I thought it was twenty twenty five, but now I'm told that after attending the meeting, it's twenty twenty six. Uh, but as different agencies across the state obtain their funding, then they'll be drawing on manufacturers to obtain these radios. If we can get ahead of that, uh, well before the mandate, then as soon as the the county will jump on board with, with the county probably with the reprogramming part of it. But if we get that, that piece, that first piece is replacing the radios, get radios that are up to date, that can be reprogrammed and that can accept the encryption, then once we get that done, uh, we can go ahead and buy those with the current configuration. But then once comes time to reprogram, we'll do them all at the same time. That'll be a fairly, uh, quick thing.
Yeah.
Uh, other than that, a lot of meetings, um, and, uh, working to get some, some, for the two officers that they haven't had in a while and, um, just keep plugging along, try to come up with a, uh, a balance. I'd like to still get out and be visible, get out of patrol, uh, but still get my duties down here in the office, which is not the fun part.
Have you got much of an opportunity, Mark, to dig it out?
I have, um, I, I changed, rearranged my schedule, so I didn't work one weekend at the first part of this month. And, and had some good feedback from, from some of, some of the public. I visited a few, few businesses and through the course of, uh, of business and, uh, stayed a little longer, had some conversations with people in, in the businesses and, and it was well received there. Um, and I attended the, uh, lockdown drill at the elementary school this month and met the principal. And had a good, good conversation with her and then actually ended up assisting her with a traffic issue they had. Um, or they had, uh, for the morning drop offs. Some of the parents were entering in, driving into a place where it's supposed to be just lost its time. And so I helped. Working off of some habits that Officer Hutchinson developed when he was working day shift, uh, for the last couple of months. And right around three o'clock, just being present and visible during the the pickup line at elementary school, if anybody's witnessed that. That, that's a mess, um, but I think just the, the presence of a patrol car there, uh,
Okay.
helps.
Yeah.
And I know the schools appreciate of, of that. And, uh, yeah, just, uh, getting out there and, and people notice, people are noticing and, and that's great.
Yeah.
Well, good, thanks.
Can you do a basketball game?
I have not.
Um, I had Mark, um, come to the DPA uh, meeting because we had lots of business people on the board and see, uh, they went down the line and introduced themselves and, uh, of what their business was and they were very pleased that we did that good. And, uh, do you want to share with them what you told me yesterday about MCOS coming and helping you through?
So each year, MCOS, which is the commission that basically monitors law enforcement, officers throughout the state licenses them and, um, keeps, keeps track of training um, certain policies that each department has and make sure that everything's up to stuff. Uh, not on everything, but there's certain things they like to cover. And so randomly each year, the MCOS selects certain agencies to to, for lack of a better term, um, audit those, those things that they work for. So I had a Zoom, i- initially it was supposed to be done last year, but the previous chief notified them that he wasn't going to be around much longer. They should just wait. So they thought that was a great idea. So I spoke with, with the representative, he's actually an Eskenada. And, uh, had a, a Zoom conference. So we went over the different policies that he's, that he needs to look at and, uh, he gave me a bunch of great, uh, resources to pull from and what he's looking for. And then that, next month, he'll actually come here to the site and pull those policies and then inspect the files and do all that. It, it sounds sort of like an OSHA kind of thing, but it's not. He, the way he explained it is he's, he's not going to, he, he's just coming to kind of get me started, get off the right foot, so.
It's like a, starting with a clean.
The clean slip, yes, from every, everything prior to, to my, me taking this office. I essentially have immunity, so. So, so it's, it's not to try to, it's not a gotcha kind of thing. He's just making sure I have all the tools I need to move forward and
Yeah.
and do so with, uh, with their lesson.
Yeah, I think that's excellent. Any other questions? Start, Mark, at the same. Okay. Fire chief, Mike.
Well, we're on page twenty one. We've got fifty-six runs already. Incredible. Um, we had a back to back on Sunday again where I was on my way to, uh, older, uh, Deadstream with four inch and three was put in service for his first haul. And, um, at the same time, I came upon an accident right there in Lake in, uh, twenty-two and, and, uh, filed the guardrail, slid right into the guardrail, so you see the nice little dent this car has. Um, so we split groups. We had four go this way and four go this way as we, uh, put care of that matter and it's a good thing that, uh, we checked that out as it was a furnace was, uh, misbehaving and actually caught the furnace on fire. So, and nobody knew about it. It was just the carbon dioxide detectors that were off. That's what we were called for. And it was caught, so I could have been at three o'clock in the morning that day up today. Anyways, as you see here, I basically gave everybody a summary of seven hundred and nine calls. We got eight hundred and one last year. Uh, so we're, we're, we have a little bit, uh, we're still running eighty percent EMS uh, runs. Uh, response times are one hundred percent, ninety-nine percent for EMS. The reason why we get ninety-nine percent is because we want with that, that call we dropped one, that's happening more and more and more, we get two calls at once. So unless I've got clues available, split them. Uh, we've been told by Tennessee, the National Recovery Priority One, or the Priority Two, so off we go and take care of the priority three call. Uh, continuous improvement process and best practice of what we're working on and as you see, a continuous improvement. What we have been doing is, uh, on our response times. I had a nice long conversation with ISO. I learned that, um, some of the water points can now be registered up in Lake Township at by, uh, latitude and longitude. And they'll accept anything even within a thousand feet of a residence. If the resident's given permission to begin on their property to do a draft, I can do a draft on the lake and that could be considered instead of putting it in a tri-hybrid, it's not considered, they consider a water point. And they'll accept that.
So that will help their player ratings?
Huge, huge. So, uh, that would even help us out because we use water points even around here. Uh, uh, you know, the ones still here, so we're, you know. Um, so we're working on that. Uh, some of the training, we put in sixty-two hours back into the training. Um, prior recovery, we had seventeen times over by eighteen thousand pains were received for about eight of them, four thousand eight ninety-four. We denied two of them and we're squined right now, apparently in litigation and they're trying to, to resolve. Uh, with, uh, fire recovery USA. Our equipment vehicle repairs are completed in December. All trucks have passed their annual pump, hose, ladder inspections. That's all done. Uh, fleet logged in about thirty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty miles. And used eight hundred and eight, uh, gallons of gasoline and nine hundred and five gallons of diesel. Uh, community risk reduction, uh, working on the CO detectors and I've been going on and talking to different townships about it that, uh, even though, uh, again, like that smoke detector that went off, deductions, uh, you know, saving lives is paying off, but carbon dioxide detectors, smoke detectors that are even wired in have length expectancy of about ten years, reminding them now, the whole house falls off. Carbon dioxide detectors, smoke detectors that are even wired in, have life expectancy of about ten years, reminding them now, the line will off and the whole house falls off. And then, um, we have basically trying to push with, uh, the communities that are visiting to. Put a finger on it, check, check, make sure it works, um, and check your data on it, we get a chance to, if, uh, undo it, give down check for date. So over ten years, you can pretty well guess, they're failing, they're failing, that's, that's what's happening out there, and that's, uh. Give you the statewide, those fire investigations re- revealed that forty nine percent of the deaths were caused by alarms that do not have batteries or exceeded their normal. Ten year lifespan, so in the state of Michigan, there's. Maybe a nineteen percent reduction in deaths overall, but it's still high because we had ninety six deaths out of ninety two fires in the state. Um, again, it's community involvement, so working with schools, uh, trade events, everything I did was at, uh. Michigan Shores, uh, and then, and Mark and I went to, uh, the lockdown. Attended all the township. More meetings and. Um. I got a hand to group, I got a wonderful group, they said nature that I. At the time of Christmas, they volunteered their time, so I had two days off Christmas, the day after Christmas and, uh. Um. Actually, go all the way through the weekend, I told you, don't, don't even come, maybe posted, don't even work, don't bother the cheese.
Any questions from my?
Yeah, I had just a couple, it's well nice to see a continuous improvement, like.
Yep.
Uh, thanks to you and the department, so last year. Uh, the city had two hundred ninety nine EMS calls, is that number. Correlate with previous years, or is that like way up or?
Two hundred ninety nine is actually, um. It's actually keeps climbing, we're gonna be approaching the eighty, eighty five percent mark probably this year. For eight of, and now already eighty five percent, so two hundred ninety nine, it's, it's continuously wrong.
You know, is that something that's on average one of days, I mean.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Times two days, sometimes three days.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mark? Okay. No, all business. Uh, planning committee. Uh. This is our boss, Beckler. Has top steps. They did the same with my last thing, for many years, I still am, you know. Uh, but anyway, has, uh, expressed an interest and he did a plan or. For attend our planning ad hoc committee as well as the planning commission. Meetings, so therefore I'm gonna make a motion, no second needed to appoint Steve. To. Thank you, to the planning commission to fill the term left by Dan Trigg. Mister Huff Setler. Term to expire April ninth of two thousand and twenty five. Roll call.
Strang, yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Ford. Yes.
Awesome, good.
Um. So the next.
Seventy seconds. According to somebody in the planning commission last month?
Yes, because we have. Yeah, it was one for Jay White.
Right.
And then, and we're gonna be having another one, so if anybody's interested, I'm assuming, and the plan, Linda. Harold, it's my friend too. But I think Cruz is in the spring, so, anyway, the next one is planning board. Of review appointments, both gentlemen are here tonight and they have gotten. Their information that they need to attend the class so that they'll be ready for the March border review. So I am making a motion and no second needed to appoint David Zimmerman. And Seth Peterson to the fourth of review. Fifteen, Crowe.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Ford. Yes.
Awesome, good.
Friends, yes.
Okay, next item is Spencer, the Werder Athletic Association Baseball Saving Project. That.
So we have funding in our reserve account, and a lot of that was through donations, um, for various lock art. Lock art improvements. Um, our auditors. Have recommended and, and essentially developed, uh. A requirement for us, whenever we take money out of the reserve account, we have council action, council action to do that. So. The F D A A, and just for the betterment of the public, because Lockhart Field is a strange piece of property. Lockhart Field is owned by the city of Frankfurt. It's maintained. By a non-profit corporation that's known as the Frankfurt Overhead Harder Association. Kind of referred to with F D H A. Um, that was established in the forties, back when I was a semi-professional baseball facility. And it's leased by the school. It's not one, never once has there been any village dollars raised for that facility. Uh, honestly, uh, the city does contribute a very little bit towards it. But everything that you've seen at that facility was done so through local donations and grants. Uh, I just wanted to make sure, and I know you guys in the council are aware of that, I just, a lot of times people don't. Don't know that that's the situation with that facility, it's very strange, uh, it does impact our ability to raise money, as you can. Imagine with the different complexity. We have funding in our reserve account, um, been communicating with Mike Zimmerman, who's gonna be back as our baseball coach. And, uh, you've noticed that the grandstand was removed off back home plate. Um, they had plans to pour a new slab with some. Block components with a cup, two, two level raised tier and with stadiums, you know, so this purchase is just for the stadium seats right now. There'll be some additional expenses in the spring when weather allows that, uh. So before you today is, uh. An agenda request to essentially approve the, the removal of those dollars from the reserve account. Um, not related to this matter, the school did receive a donation from, uh. Believe it's the, the Ralph Jackson estate, and if you remember Ralph said, he did the teachers, he's been a. Tremendous friend to Lockhart Field in our community. Um, so. I gotta do a little bit more collaboration with Jeff Towsley at the school. Um, but there's some dollars that they have that, that are gonna be utilized towards Lockhart Field, we just gotta figure out exactly what the intent is for that. Cause a component of the Lockhart Field improvements is to do a new softball field on school property. And then convert the softball field to a little field, which will. Which is still used that way in summer, uh, so. In that situation, F D A A would, would still take care of that part of field. Right now, it's a, it's a little big field, so.
Parts of this money that we have like.
But the school would use some of their, some of their dollars on, on field and their property.
Okay.
And they're also working, they're also doing a promotion too, yeah, at the end of February, for softball, for, for, for baseball. Okay, baseball, at the Garden Theater. To, to help with this kind of projects and more stuff, yeah, so, just trying to get more involved and trying to get the, uh, field. And some of the stuff that really is there. Well, there's a, there's a, we gotta do a better job at, at really promoting the history of that facility, you know, it's, uh. In the Negro League was big there, um, the, the, the Sons of David, which was a bearded league. Which was famous back.
From, that in Harvard?
Yeah, they, they played, so, and the reason we have a lot of people around is because Mr. Bob Blacker didn't want you to see a game without theme. So that was all planted. So it's sacred, but.
So, and so I'll. Here, no one, I'll make a motion to approve the expense to replace the baseball seating in Lockhart Field using park wrecks. Preparation reimbursement. Express Lockhart Field as a corresponding budget amendment. These funds shall be reimbursed as follows, fifty dollars from the F E A A baseball grandstand reserve. And six thousand one hundred and forty five dollars from the F E A A leacher, like, in reserve, I'll say it back.
Carter.
Yes.
Olsen.
Yes.
Ford. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the next thing is about closing City Hall. Um, between one thirty and three thirty, um, Friday. Uh, I have no motion prepared for that, uh, because that. That was the ask by press late Sunday, um. To do that so that the staff can. Support her. As a.
Trigger.
So, and it will be posted on the website as well as posted on the door, that will be disclosed for service for those hours.
Second then, are you making a motion?
I can make that motion. Then, uh, so the staff can tend that, you know. Okay, roll call, Olsen.
Yep.
Strang. Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Ford. Yeah. Well, next item is, um. The assessors, um, yeah. Right, so I'm gonna let, um.
Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, we're at the end of the six month. Covationary period. And, uh, you know, you'll see a quarterly report with your package. But, uh, I think there's been some really positive things with Don Wyatt. And, uh, he's, um, we only have two of their cases, um. That. He's, you know, visiting properties like he should be, he's. You know, he's responding to the public and not letting things go on. I think he's, uh, doing a really good job and, uh, it would be the recommendation of the personnel committee that we. Award him a, a thousand dollar increase, uh. To the south.
Uh, that's Daniel.
We made a motion or, uh. It, it's.
Anybody can. You don't have one, have those written out either.
So it's, so it's basically, uh. Recommending a thousand dollar increase to Wyatt's, uh, salary. Uh, starting in the next, uh, paper. Setting that, do you want?
I'll second, you're making a motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we need to do any budget numbers for that?
No, I thank you for, thank you for stating that, so that money is already in the budget. Uh, we raised on budget last year and the previous, uh, successors, uh. Uh, salary and we are still well under.
We're on that, yeah.
He's, he's been great for.
And. Has office hours all day on Friday, so I think that's just awesome and it gives the public the option to come in and. And speak with him, so roll call. Sharon, yes, Crowe.
Yes.
Carter's.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Awesome, good.
Okay, the last one is, uh, appointment to the meet, uh, Marine Authority, I just received this today. Which, like Josh says, they're short, um, uh, an interest in. Uh, serving on the Marina.
He'll be good, yeah, he will be, he, he's got a, he's got a, uh, passion for the Marina. Well, we can, we can see, actually speak loud and where he's, he'll have, he'll have that situation now. But he just got some Marina background with our key, uh, yeah, there's a lot of work. Every time I see him, he brings up the Marina, so what better spot would happen?
Right, so I. Make the motion, uh, I know second needed to appoint John. Then come you.
Be a molder.
Be a molder. His name.
It's nothing.
To the Marine Authority to complete the term of John Perpatrie that will expire through nineteen of two thousand and twenty six.
So. I don't suspect.
Oh, oh, the word, yes.
Yep.
Drat, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Now it's time for the last, second foot. Yeah.
So I'll speak a lot.
Interesting.
Just a second. Yesterday, Mark came in and handed me his retirement, like. Can he fire the department? I'd like to acknowledge and thank him for the one years of service to the fire. He's been an outstanding, this is, he started when him and I attended fire school when he used a stock shelf. Prebos, came on into the class and. Shirt tied, I said, who's a kid wearing shirt and tie in here every time, of course. It, it was a young, young kid, looking with dance and all this, and we were all in the same class together and, and, and that. We appreciate that, Mark, thirty one years of service you gave.
Thank you for that, fine.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Motion has third foot and second. Hall favor.
Hi.